Yes, sir. So as authorized by Virginia Code Section fifteen point two dash fourteen thirteen. In Alamo County's continuity of government ordinance, this meeting is being held electronically over the Zoom platform. The meeting has real time audio visual access. Or the public has real time audio visual access to the meeting over Zoom, real time audio access over telephone. Everyone on the phone and attending via Zoom from the public is in listen only mode. If there are members of the public attending by Zoom who wish to speak during the public comment, please use the raise hand feature to notify the meeting facilitator. For those joining by telephone, please use star nine to indicate you would like to comment. State your full name and the magisterial district in which you reside before getting into the substance of your comment. If you don't know your district, provide a general location for your home or business. Each speaker will have three minutes to comment. This meeting is being recorded. A copy will be posted on the county's website. And with that explanation, I will ask the board members to identify themselves and their general location. And so we'll start with the chair, Bucky Walsh.
I'm Bucky Walsh. I'm at my home in Alamo County.
Let's see, Vice Chair, Jake with.
I'm here at my home in Stony Point.
Treasurer Trevor Henry.
Present and in my residence in Almar County.
Let's see, Secretary Bill Fritz.
I'm here and at my home in Charleston.
And Supervisor Price, Donna Price.
I am present from the Victory Hall town places in beautiful Scottsville, Virginia, where the Batto Festival is taking place.
And let's see Supervisor Jim Andrews.
And I'm at my home in the beautiful Samuel Miller District of Alamo County.
Mr. Chair, everyone is present and accounted for, so we can proceed.
Fantastic. Thank you very much, Richie. Our next order of a business is to move on to the approval of the agenda. As everyone had a chance to review it, is there a motion to approve saying? We don't need the weather picture go by.
Yeah.
I hear a motion to do so. I'll second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Hearing none, the agenda is approved. That brings us to brief announcements by authority members. I'll just run through the list real quickly. I don't have any. Trevor, do you have anything? Jim? Nope. Waldo? Nope, Donna?
The Scottsville Fourth of July Parade will start at nine o'clock on Monday. I don't actually have my calendar in front, whatever the Monday of the July fourth holiday weekend is, it may actually be July fourth.
Not this coming Monday, but the Monday following, okay? Bill?
No, nothing.
And I think that takes care of that item. So that brings us to the public comment period. This is the opportunity for those of you who are participating in this meeting by phone or as participant to to do so. I'm not seeing anybody light up.
Well, I just want to point out, did Bucky's audio and video just cut out for everybody else for 10 seconds?
Uh huh.
Or is it just me?
Am I back?
Yes, yes, you're back.
Yeah. Okay, so you may need to repeat the the offer there, Bucky.
Ah, well. Those of you who are participants to on this call who've dialed in or connected by the internet. If you'd like to speak to the authority at this time, we've got an opportunity for you to do so. It's star nine on your phone. Or use the raised hand feature in your Zoom browser. And let us know you'd like to say something to us. Although if I disappear entirely, you take over.
Good luck to us all. I would I would do my best.
Okay. Just for the record, it's pouring down here and we've had thunder and lightning in this immediate vicinity, just in the last few seconds. I don't see anyone from our attendees who's indicating they'd like to speak, so I suggest we move on. The next item of business is the approval of the May twenty fifth meeting minutes. Bill, I I sent you some feedback saying they looked fine. Did you get any substantive feedback to the minutes?
Yes, there was one. I had a double negative for Mr. Andrews during the motion. And I couldn't figure out a way to make it three negatives, so I just think it's fine. So.
Well, I know Mr. Andrews would never use a double negative, so it must have been a transcription error.
It was me, but I did. I did try to figure out how to make it three, but I couldn't do it.
Bring it back around again.
Yep, yep.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I all those, is there anyone opposed? You guys all just froze for me, so I don't know if I'm coming through or not.
It was it was I all around.
It was I all the way around.
Good, glad to hear it. So the minutes are approved. And that takes us to old business. First with the body twenty twenty one update.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be as quick as I can on this. I know there's a lot of business that we need to attend to today. And I will go through all of the old business up to the financial report where I'll turn it over to Treasurer Henry. Just so the board knows, I'm going to be advancing the slides on my own. And hopefully it'll be a good update. First slide. So body twenty one, we're working with Century Link Lumen on this. There's two projects coming up, Advanced Mills and Milton Hills are next. Currently taking orders at Gilbert Station and soon to be taking orders at Advanced Mills and Milton Hills. Lumen continues to work to mitigate material and labor shortages, so that's a ongoing issue. We have another webinar on July first. That's not this coming Friday, but the Friday after. Hopefully it'll be well attended on a holiday weekend, July fourth, Independence Day weekend. But those webinars are well attended generally. Just to display the work schedule, nothing has changed from the last time, other than we highlight that we completed the six three webinar, six three two thousand twenty two. And to show that orders are scheduled to be starting on June thirtieth. The other thing that we were hopeful to provide the broadband authority this evening was a breakdown of those two large projects toward the end, the one that's Box Holly, Taylor's Gap and Rosemont. Century Link Engineering is working on splitting those, so that there's a better schedule to provide to the community members in those areas. The same is true for Campbell, Cobham and Stony Point. So the goal is to break those down, so there's a little more clarity on when each of those areas will receive service. So we were looking for a take rate update. We did not receive one from Century Link prior to this meeting. May go back there. So that the take rate we hope has improved. We know that there's been some questions coming in from at least two of the currently launched project areas about people who are expecting service. So we understand, you know, there's a lot going on within the Century Link Lumen world because of the transfer over eventually to Apollo and then to Brightspeed. So lots going on there, but they are continuing work, so we feel confident that they're going to stay on schedule and these take rates are are going to increase. As I mentioned earlier, the two areas where there's currently a lot of construction on what are called the laterals, the fiber that goes up and down the streets, not directly to the homes, but up and down the streets in these two areas. So there's a lot of construction going on. Sometimes there's human error that cuts through lines and fortunately, over the last, since the last time we met with the broadband authority, we haven't heard of any more of those. So we're hopeful that some good leadership has happened with the company, letting them know the locate company that was serving Century Link needs to make sure they're doing a better job of doing their locates. So the other areas that we talked about, especially the the two large ones are in engineering and design and will be broken out soon. Hopefully by that July first meeting and update. Okay, before I go on to twenty two, I just wanted to stop there for a second and ask the broadband authority if they had any questions about twenty one, body twenty one. So open for questions here for a second. Anyone have any questions? Looks like there's no question, so I'll move forward. At this point, what I would like to do is bring in Mr. Dennis Reese from Firefly to give us an update. Oh, he was here, yeah. I'm going to promote him to panelists. So Dennis, get ready. Promoting you to panelists. You know, Richie Deloria is excellent employee, excellent teammate, just a great person to have with the county of Alamo. And thanks for all your work getting us through to the third party agreement. The three party agreement has been completed, so Mr. Gary Wood signed that a few days ago, and now it's been forwarded to TJ PDC. It's complex, you know, this is a complex out taking. There still needs to be a contract with TJ PDC, who is the co applicant for twenty two. They have to be under contract with with the HCD. And we're targeting the end of June. And Firefly continues a lot of make ready work and has been sending out letters to impacted residents. There's lots of work going on and I'm going to turn it over to Dennis to to give the broadband authority an update. So Dennis, are you on? And can you give us an update on what's going on with Firefly? Thanks.
Yes, I'm here and hopefully you can hear me.
Yes, sir.
So you know, Firefly, of course, we're we're, as most of you already know, for the audience, we're wholly owned subsidiary of Central Virginia Electric Co-op. So the original build was the deceive that fiber built to all its members. So we have been serving customers in Alamo World for a while. And the main areas have been Cassius Corner, valid Cassius Corner Substation. The substations, Allen's Crossroads, Midway and Martin Store is currently where we have customers. So we are continuing to build to to construct fiber in the county. And the goal is to complete the build to all the C vec customers by end of summer, the mainline construction. And then by the end of summer, we expect to make our first connections to the homes in Whitehall and Red Hill and Scholar. And those those installs will continue through the end of the year. In Whitehall, that's a big area for us and very remote and we're about eighty percent complete with the mainline fiber construction. Of course, after that, we got to splice it and then still build the drops. And Red Hill, that's a smaller area and we're about forty five percent complete on the fiber construction. And Scholar, we're still trying to finish up the make the make ready work. It's a smaller area. And that area will be built fairly quick once we get the make ready complete. We we for the Vadi twenty twenty two. We are already working with our partners in the county. We have a partnership with three other electric utilities that are in the county. One is REC or Rapahannic Electric. There's a small area to the north. We've we've already designed that area that's going to be served out of the how that telecommunications stuff is going to be placed in Standardsville. And that design is underway. And with one of our other partners is Dominion Energy and UDLAS and the Middle Mall Program. We're actively working with them. You know, going over the routes that we need and the desired access point locations. And and Dominion's team has been you know, assessing those and doing some ride outs and we've been going some, you know, going back and forth. Should try to determine where the middle now will be. I think there's an update from Dominion today on this call. Our other, the other electric utility that we're partnering with is Apalachian Power, APCO. We submitted poll proposals to them back in March for over fifty six hundred polls in the county. AP has been working on the make ready engineering work for the the engineering design for Red Hill, what we're calling AP Red Hill and AP Keen in the southern part of the county. We Firefly's contractor that does our data collection before we do the actual engineering, the actual design of the fiber network has already completed their work and the AP Red Hill area. And that area is actually highlighted on our website under the partner pages for the county. If someone wants to see that. And our, of course, our website is fireflyba.com. We expect AP to start to make ready work for the AP Red Hill area around the end of the year or beginning of twenty twenty three. And that's the latest information I have.
Thanks, Dennis. Any questions? And I don't, we generally, when we receive questions, the broadband accessibility and affordability office about the rise project, we send them to the the Firefly website that has the the maps that Dennis was talking about. So they're available on the fireflyvirginia.com. And I think it's as simple as slash partners and then to the Alamo side, but it's it's pretty easy to find those static maps, but definitely show that things are working. I wanted to remind the broadband authority that the work that's going toward activating C vec members in Alamo County was partially an action taken by the Alamo Broadband Authority when they signed a tax tax grant incentive agreement in December of two thousand eighteen. So if you look look way back, it was you know, an innovative thing that the broadband authority put together and working with our economic development authority and Firefly and our finance department, because they're they're processing the tax bills and then processing the rebate. So it's it's good to know that things are moving along with that project. Lots of things going on. So I talked a little too much. Any questions for Dennis while he's still on with us?
Thank you, Dennis.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, I'll move on. Next slide. Okay, so one of this, one of the challenges of working with multiple funding sources, one of which is a funding source that was once called Connect America Funds and it became Connect America Funds two or Cav two. And then the FCC renamed it again to the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund or ARDOF. What happened with Alamo County is we were successful with all all some metals for for the Virginia Telecommunication Initiative. But in some cases, federal funding can override state funding. And in this case, we were overridden by Rural Digital Opportunity Funds that were offered by the federal government in twenty. And this was during the time that we had submitted our application for Virginia Telecommunication Initiative twenty twenty one. So just a quick overview of that. Our original submitter or the broadband authority's original submitter with Century Link Lumen included a large portion of northeast Alamo. Keswick up to Campbell, all the way to the Green Border. We then received, this was after the submitter, we received an award notice that required us to remove a center section of that application. And we did so. So we worked together and we did this re-scope, but what has happened is it it's it's had an impact, a slight impact. Because that one big section was split into two and because it's such a large, it's such a large regional project in twenty two, those those areas were submitted and put in and accepted in for twenty two. So they are being planned to be served fiber. The goal and the recommendation that will come here toward the end is to potentially move them forward if possible. Looking at it as a one time prioritization project. So just to give you a quick view, and I realize and I've tried to do a little bit better with the shading on these maps. But what you're looking at is the blue areas, you can see Turkey Sag Road and Stony Point Road there in the right corner. And then it's Advanced Mills Village up there above Earlysville. And then Jones Mill Road over near Croze. And then one of our bigger projects, the Box Holly and Taylor's Gap off of Dick's Dick Woods Road. And then several smaller projects. But when Arduf came in, so you notice how big the Turkey Sag Road and Gordonstall Road area was. You can see how it's split. The colors aren't great. I tried to change the colors so that would be more impactful. But you can see how that that split really, really subjected that area to you know, a different view. I'm just going back and forth just to, you know, designate again. So those purplish areas are are included in twenty two, so they will be served by Firefly. So we're very thankful for that being approved through the regional project. So what we're asking, if everybody understands the impact. What we're asking is that we have an opportunity to to go back to the provider, the Arduf awardee. And ask them to look at ways to accelerate any of the projects that were restoked out of body twenty one. And I'm going to stop there for a second and ask if there's any questions. And with with Dennis Reese on the line, there's the possibility, we could also ask questions of him, but I think I'll just leave it there and just see what the broadband authority thinks about that recommendation. So.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Is has Arduf? Well, have these parcels, these the census blocks been presumably they're claimed because the reverse auction Arduf process means that a broadband provider has won that auction for those those census blocks. Do we know which which ISP won that auction?
Yes, it is Firefly through through. It's it's a little bit of a it was awarded to Consortium of Electricity Providers and Firefly and C vec were part and parcel to that award. So they were part of the bigger award.
I see. So I didn't understand how that could then happen as a part of the body twenty twenty two work, because that would still be prohibited, except Firefly could just choose to do the work at the same time anyway, because they're already planning on doing it and they happen to bill. Or yeah, they're paid by the FCC instead of by body and by ABBA, but the end result is the same. Do I have that right?
Yes, you do. The other thing to to point out with Arduf, that it wasn't as full, what I would call as full an award as the Virginia Telecommunication Initiative. So with twenty two, there was a means of going through and looking at the Arduf awarded parcels or actual what we'll call passings. And the the participants or the applicants who submitted Arduf awarded passings received a half a point for each of those. So just to give you, you know, how how it all went down, it was like they were awarded half the amount of money for an Arduf parcel versus a non Arduf. And I see Supervisor Price has her hand up, so.
Yeah, Mike, I mean, I think that makes sense to do what you've recommended. You know, it's it just reminds me of the law of unintended consequences and that no good deed goes unpunished. And you know, I appreciate you recognizing this and trying to get some action so that those people who just got out of it don't have to suffer any longer than necessary. So thank you for that.
I have a follow up question. Do we know that Century Link slash Lumen has said, oh, well, if we're not going to be paid to extend fiber to these folks, then we're not going to do it. Have they said we're out if we have to pay for all of it ourselves?
Yes, for the areas that were restoked out of twenty two.
Interesting.
I mean, I was twenty one, right?
Thank you.
Chair Walsh?
Mike, other than the historical, we had them in and then took them out. Why are you motivated to make these folks go first as opposed to anybody else in the county?
Great question, Chair. I think it's more an opportunity in multiple areas to provide service to what has typically been an overlooked and under and underserved area. In this particular case, one of the reasons that they qualified for Arduf was because of how underserved they were. So in a sense, it was you know, it was it was a tough decision to to pull them out of twenty one, otherwise we wouldn't have received any of the funding. So it just, it's really been a tough question, you know, and I appreciate your question. I know I don't have a great answer. It just seems like if they were included in a project that possibly would have been funded and then asked to be taken out just from general equity and fairness. Anything, any opportunity we have to you know, have them looked at as either an early or somehow prioritized. Just becomes a fairness issue. This this has been a tough question all around, but unfortunately, I don't have a great answer. I know I stumbled over my words there and I apologize, but I don't have a great answer to that question other than the fact that they were in a prior project and then removed and for good reason, which is that that's the only answer I have right now.
So is the upshot that folks, some of these folks believe they were going to be getting broadband in the next few months, and instead they will wait an unknown time, as many as years. They might be measured in months or more likely years until Firefly extends the service to their area.
That's correct. That's correct. And I guess that's the other, that's the other good reason to to put these folks back in place is that in some cases, they're going to see the Century Link Lumen project right next door. So there there will be neighbors that will have fiber built to them. And you know that you could put, you could put that equation in in any justification, but you're right. Waldo, it is, that's part and part of this. All right, I saw Trevor raise his hand, so.
Yeah, Mike, thanks and appreciate you bringing this forward. Didn't I believe the office did take a look at all the Arduf areas? And and tried to look through different lenses, including equity, timing, educational opportunities. Didn't didn't you try to filter this recommendation through some some metrics like that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Henry. Yes, we did. We not only went through and counted the actual passings and east of the census blocks that were impacted. We also looked at the number of students who are recipients of free and reduced lunch for the the most densely populated. So we we filtered down and looked at the most densely populated areas and looked at the numbers from free and reduced lunch. And it's it's tough in Alamo because of the way the census blocks are, but we have a determination of which of the areas are the lower income areas. So there there's definitely a qualifier that we looked at that was an anticipated, you know, lower income. We sort of had to work toward that number by looking at value of property, how long the property has been held by the same family. So we we put together, I think we have generally really good metrics that show which of these areas fit into the the equity lens, which is an important part of Alamo County now that we're our community value drives our work. If we have an opportunity to do equitable type work to to bring people up to levels of their neighbors, et cetera. We we have an obligation to work toward those goals.
To Mike, an outcome of that process resulted in this recommendation.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Chair Walsh? Chair Walsh?
One, let this my last question, so I I won't trouble you again. The re-scope recommendation that you're looking for from us. Should I have a presumption that within the same economic framework that we're working in? So from a cost standpoint, all of the things being equal, we'd like these areas to go as early as they could in the process. But we don't want to do anything to drive additional cost into the project. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes. That that would be a a difficult decision to make. Since since all of these areas are receiving funding and are being planned to be delivered fiber. So, yes.
Are there any other questions for Mike?
I'll I'll just make the point that presumably a letter should should represent that like we have to be realistic in understanding that it may simply be infeasible for reasons of where existing infrastructure is and where things are built out to particularly prioritize this area. That like there's a a limited amount of pain that we can expect Firefly to go through here in order to make that happen. But that we'd sure like to learn, like if it's it can't be prioritized, well, can you, can you tell us why? Because if I lived just a little bit farther that way, I would be affected by this. And I would really, really want to know when I'm going to be able to get that that broadband. I'm sure people are interested throughout the county. But I really feel for for folks, including some folks who have sometimes joined this call as attendees, who will be really alarmed to discover that this thing that they've really been counting on is about to to disappear. So so anyway, I just want to acknowledge that like, I'm sure Firefly will do their best, but if they could, as they're doing their best, help us to understand why they've made the decisions that they've made, once they've made those decisions. If it's anything other than we're beginning with this part of the county, then it would be great for us to learn about that so that we can make sure that the affected residents understand.
Excellent point. I will make that part of the letter, too. It's a thank you. You know, I I need to point out that, you know, this is Firefly, this is an option for them. There's, we can't like say we're not going to do the project unless, you know.
Right, no, this is
Exactly.
You're just trying to add input to the decision-making process as they scope out how and when they're going to do the project. All of the things being equal, could these go earlier?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, I think you need a motion if you want this recommendation to go forward. Does anyone who'd like to move something to this effect?
What would we be moving? Would it be to provide us with a draft of a letter?
It's actually issues that we that the broadband office would draft a letter that we would if we found it acceptable, presumably someone like me would find it acceptable based on our conversations here this evening. Then sign it and send it on to Firefly and let them know, hey, this is what we'd like to have happen if if it's something you can work into your program.
That makes sense.
So having said all those words, let me move that.
Okay.
Then seconded, all those in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Then I'll look forward to seeing a draft from the broadband office. We can knock back and forth till we get it languished up the way it ought to be.
Thank you, board. We'll move on to the next item. That is twenty twenty-three, so jump into our next big deadline is July seventh, twenty twenty-two, and currently the funding for twenty twenty-three stands at fifty million, down from seven hundred from twenty-two. So, you know, we're, we're looking at ways to partner. One of the things that the broadband office is doing is going to a survey mechanism in what are called our development areas. We see the potential. We're not certain that this will be possible. But since we have a plan that's going to deliver a fiber to all of the rural areas of Almar County, thanks to Firefly and work that New Most Fiber and Century Link Lumen are doing. We feel like we have everything covered in our rural areas. Now we have to look at, is it possible that some of our development areas are receiving service that is less than the current standard, which is a hundred and twenty. So you know, the only way that we can really look at that is talk to our providers and find out, you know, what services are they offering and which areas? And then are there any, what I would call dead fiber zones, where they're not quite up to a hundred and twenty in some of the older neighborhoods? And if possible, we would work with them to put in an application. And even if we aren't successful, the work done for this will apply to future funding, which is coming down in in a very significant way through the BE program, the new IIJA. The funding's likely not to be available during this round of of body. So twenty-four will be prepared because we've done some some work ahead of time, so. And there's no telling, you know, it's possible that body twenty-four could happen early and in twenty-three versus, you know, typically you apply in August for a body. You know, they could move up the deadline, so we do have the possibility of early work on that. We shared these maps. Nothing has changed. I'm putting them up there again just to give you an indication. It's primarily the sections on the right, which are development areas where we've designated as low income are are priority areas. A lot of the locations here are what are called NDU multi-distribution, where multi- multiple people live in a complex, so it could be an apartment complex, condominium, those types of things. So we're, we're looking at, you know, those high-density, low-income areas as the priority for body twenty-three. And that was it. So any questions about twenty-three? Oh, one thing I have to bring up to the board is that we already have our letter of intent. We're going to submit two letters of intent to apply on July seventh. They'll be generic in nature unless we hear from one or more of our ISPs about this before the seventh. But one will be coming from the Broadband Accessibility and Affordability Office, and one will be coming from from the Broadband Authority. And I'll I'll share that as we get closer to that July seventh date. But these letters of intent do not, you know, what is it called, like lock us in? So either the broadband authority or the broadband office, the letters of intent don't mean we have to submit an application. So that's it. Questions on twenty-three?
Sounds like you're doing the right stuff, Mike.
Yeah, working in that direction. Yep, thank you, Chair. Okay, on to Treasurer Henry. Got the financial report up there.
Once again, a quick report, no change from last meeting.
Okay, good. All right, moving on. I'll be quicker with these, just to thank Jason and Affluentes and the Finance Department, and especially our representative in the County Attorney's Office, Richard Deloria. Just the the work that went toward the ACP launch, which I'll talk about on its own slide here in a second. And then I'll I'll give a very brief Century Link Lumen service update. And then talk about a broadband access summit that that was going on today. And why Jason's not with us during this meeting, because he was invited to participate on a panel. And I'll just update the broadband authority on Jason's work today. So the ACP bridge launch, we've talked about this for a while. The bridge is a twenty-dollar additional per month benefit for those who are participating in the Affordable Connectivity Program, which is a federal program similar to Lifeline, but it extends the qualifying events and qualifiers who can can come in, everything from veterans, services, senior citizens who are receiving additional benefits, free and reduced meals. It's it's, there's a long list of people who can participate in the Affordable Connectivity Program. It it was, it was after the emergency broadband benefit, which was a fifty-dollar per month benefit. And the broadband office decided to make a an additional twenty dollars to to build ACP up to the original emergency broadband benefit. So if you think about the bridges, we were at fifty dollars per month. Suddenly, a family of four is dropped down to thirty dollars per month. Our intent is to bring them back up to that level. And this is especially important now with inflation happening, the cost of fuel and and grocery bills. So we feel like this is a really important benefit to bring to Almar County residents. Where we are with it is we have a memorandum of understanding that needs to go to each of the ISPs that are serving the Almar County residents. The memorandum of understanding was emailed to the ISPs and they're in process of reviewing. We have heard back from two. We will be contacting all of them to find out if they have any questions. Our goal is to start having the July bills of ACP individuals in Almar County see this additional twenty dollars on, you know, credit on their their monthly bills up to twenty dollars. So we're excited about it. The ISPs are are also the ones that we've talked to. They feel it's a great idea. And we're we're working to making it a reality. We still need the ISPs to participate, so we're holding our breath, I guess is the right word, but feel like we're in a good spot so far. You know, going back to the Century Link Lumen, that that process of moving toward the transition to bright speed. The SEC put in a transition plan. Chair of the Board of Supervisors, Donna Price, was impactful in this and really helped move this forward. We asked for and did not receive an update, so this update is the same update from last month. Where there's been an analysis of the seventy-two cables completed and sixty-seven of those are to receive rehabilitation, which means either replacement or additional construction that will work with them. So unfortunately, I don't have a the latest update on this, but I thought I would bring that up for the board. Last is just to let you know that Dr. Tamara Holmes invited Jason and Affluentes to participate on a panel with her. And it was really a great panel. There were also a few other great conference sessions. So when we receive the recordings, we'll make sure we send them around to the broadband authority. So any questions about the broadband office update? Okay.
Sounds like you guys are keeping busy.
Yeah, I think, thank you, Chair. I think the July, we're hopeful that the July meeting will have updates on where we are with the ACP bridge. So when we meet on July sixth, we hope to really bring some good news back. You know, we're also trying and we're working together with the school division on this. You know, one of our goals is to up our ACP numbers, the numbers in general. So we'll have an update on both of those. So Supervisor Price?
Thank you, Mike. First off, thank you for those very kind words, but the reality is you and Jason were the ones who were behind all of our success. You worked with all the different counties that were involved. You helped prepare the data and the people for the testimonies. So, you know, really the kudos go to y'all, but that was that was you to share that.
Okay. No other questions? I'll move on to new business. So let me switch over to participants. And promote Mr. Garrett Braun to the panelists.
Welcome, Mr. Braun.
I'm getting there. Okay. And then next.
Hello.
Hi, Garrett, yeah. We can hear you.
Hi, everybody.
Just let me know when you want me to advance the slide there, Garrett. Thanks for joining.
Yeah, we'll do. Yeah, happy to be here. So, hey, everybody, board members and citizens of Almar County, I'm Garrett Braun. I'm a marketing and communications coordinator for Dominion Energies for rural broadband program. I've been assigned to Almar County. And I serve as the point of contact for communications, both internal with our contractors and employees and external to our customers, as well as the citizens of Almar County. We also have Chauncey Dallas, the project manager for Almar County as well on the line. She has dialed in on the phone, so Mike, you said it was just star nine to unmute, is that right?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, great. And Chauncey, she's just on there for any questions that I can't answer, so. But yeah, first of all, you know, I'd just like to say thank you all for giving us the opportunity to speak on the meeting. I have been following along with the broadband authorities' regular meetings since I started on with the rural broadband program. And I certainly appreciate the work you all have done to enable broadband access in Almar County. Speaking on behalf of Dominion Energy Virginia, you know, we're thrilled to be able to facilitate broadband access in Almar County as well as other rural areas of the Commonwealth. We always look forward to opportunities to improve the quality of life and the economic prosperity in the communities that we serve. And I certainly want to thank our partners, Firefly and Almar County for providing that opportunity. You can go to the next slide there, Mike. So what is, what exactly is the the role of Dominion Energy Virginia in broadband access? We're working, just to start off, Dominion Energy, we're not a internet service provider. We're simply providing the means for rural areas to gain access to the internet via fiber optic cable. We plan to do that by installing middle-mile fiber optic cable along our existing distribution infrastructure. And the ISP or internet service provider we partner with, in this case is Firefly, will deliver the, they'll deliver the last mile service to the customer's home. And when we say middle mile, that's a long trunk line stretching out to rural areas, you can see in the diagram there. The middle mile has historically been a problem for rural areas, and since there are less customers per square mile, you know, internet service providers have been reluctant to build long, expensive lines of fiber and have less customers to get to regain the cost of that investment. And really, back in twenty eighteen with the with the passing of the Grid Transformation and Security Act, there was a clause that required Dominion Energy to submit a broadband feasibility report to the SEC. And this is where we outlined the middle mile approach and pretty much just where the rural broadband program began. You can go to the next slide there, Mike. So fiber on Dominion Energy's distribution system, there's a few different types. And Dominion Energy, we're building over a hundred miles of fiber in Almar County. And this is the case in other rural areas as well. We're not just building in Almar. We've got Louisa, we've got Richmond County. Some areas west of Almar as well. But really, the most common type of fiber that we're going to be building is for the rural broadband program. You'll also see fiber out there specifically for connecting our grid and improving reliability with the grid transformation plan. And then a third type of fiber you may see as well is the transfer trip fiber for solar stations, just letting our grid know when solar power is flooding back to the grid and then when it's not. So you see Dominion Energy Fiber. It's not always just going to be for the rural broadband program. Can go to the next slide, Mike. So what goes into a middle-mile fiber op- fiber optic cable project? What goes into the rural broadband program projects? And really, at a high level, you can kind of drill this down to about six phases here. So first off, project scoping. Dominion Energy personnel is going to work with an ISP to identify the route to take to reach unserved areas. After that, we're going to be in the design and permitting phase. Permits are pursued for building and projects are designed. We are working almost entirely with design vendors for this county. It's going to be Pike Engineering as the design vendor. And Dominion Energy is obviously going to QC that before it goes to construction. Easement research and acquisition, these middle-mile fiber projects, they're very simple. We're just adding a small fiber optic cable to our existing infrastructure with minimal additional equipment needed. Sometimes, you know, we may have to have a pole that will need to be replaced. Or, you know, we'll find a pole that's not up to standards. In this case, if we do need to replace a pole or add any or sometimes add equipment to the pole, that's when we may need a supplemental communications easement. And in that case, our vendor partners will secure them and customers will receive separate communications by mail. And this is a a rare case. About two percent of the time, as I mentioned before, it's relatively simple just to add that fiber cable to our existing lines there. Site preparation, you know, the construction contractors prepare the roof for construction, make ready and fiber installation. If poles do need to be replaced, Make ready and fiber installation. If poles do need to be replaced, make ready step is generally when we will do that. Fiber installation, again, very simple process. Under ideal conditions. Our crews can install about a mile of fiber a week. So it's very quick. Our crews can kind of be in and out. And then you'll see the the picture I have up there of the Dominion tag on the fiber optic cable. That's how you know it's going to be Dominion Energy's fiber as well. And then property restoration, you know, obviously, we're going to make that a priority. Property is going to be left in its original state or better. And if it isn't. You know, that's what I'm there for. Somebody's going to give me a call and I'm going to make it right. That's kind of what I'm involved with for the program. Next slide, Mike. All right. So communications along the project lifecycle. We really want to make sure that our customers are informed about the project along the way. So. A quick overview of each step from a communications perspective. So scoping. When a contractor or Dominion Energy employee goes out to evaluate the route, a form letter, which is basically just an introductory letter to the. For the RBB program, Rural Broadband Program, will be sent out to our customers, just letting them know. That they may see a contractor on their property soon and letting them know if, you know, Firefly is the ISP. Giving them the MCC Marketing Communications Coordinator's contact information. So in this case, my contact information. For any questions they may have. However, a lot of the time, we are moving relatively quickly through these areas and trying to hit deadlines. So sometimes, you know, we're unable to get. That form letter out in the mail before a scoping employee comes out to visit. But in this case, in that case, our contracted employees will have copies of these letters. Fact sheets on the program as well as, you know, a list of authorized Dominion Energy contractors, just so the customer can easily identify them. And then verify that they should be there. Design and easement research. Once we have all of the property research complete, we can send out the introduction letter if we haven't already. Also, again, if we do need that supplemental communications easement, additional print material will be sent in the mail. For construction, at most, contact will be made two weeks in advance, but certainly at least two days in advance. That's where we're going to be sending out the installation postcard. Letting our customers know that a contracted Dominion Energy construction crew will be in their area installing fiber optic cable. And as I said before, again, simple process, crews are in and out. If customers have any concerns, they can always contact me. Or the other MCCs involved with the program who are going to be listed on the installation postcard as well. Finally, completion, when construction is completing the area, postcard will be sent out to all customers as a follow up. And then just letting them know to contact the ISP for the next steps to getting connected. And Mike, I think that's all the slides I had. I believe I had my contact information up there. Oh, yeah. Example of the of the form letter here. You know, just giving information about the program, MCC contact info, that's going to go out earlier. And then you've got the. Installation postcard over there on the right side as well.
Okay.
And my contact information is up there. I've got my phone number and email. And then again, all of this information and some print material and other information videos about the program are always available on the company website as well.
Thanks, Garrett. That was quick and easy.
And informative.
Yes, and informative. You know, we are receiving questions from the community on the the work that's going on to. Produce this middle mile. So this is very helpful. So when questions come in, we have the the slide deck plus the the webpage that. Dominion Energy is built for the Rural Broadband Program is a definite asset, makes it really clear what's going on. So. Absolutely appreciate all the input. So, yeah, Chair, if you if, oh, I I see. Supervisor Andrews has his hand up. Go ahead.
Yes, Dennis, I think had his hand up first.
Okay, Chair, is it okay to bring Dennis Reese in to ask?
Please do, Mike.
Okay, go ahead, Dennis. I think you're still on.
Yeah, thank you all. Just, you know. Thank you, Garrett, for your presentation. Just as a reminder for everybody that's watching this is, once Dominion finishes their piece. Then we still have to come in and do the final mount, the final construction to get to the homes. So. Once Dominion finishes and that postcard sent out, there's still some extra steps and. It's still it's still going to be some time for us to get in there to get them connected. I just want to set that expectation.
Fiber on a Dominion pole outside my house does not mean I'm about to get hooked up.
That's right. Thanks for making that clear, Dennis. And that information is also included on that completion postcard. As well that we will be sending out once we're actually finished with the entire county.
And that was actually one of my questions was about the difference between the notices that you're sending and what's actually going to come from Firefly. But another question that's come up because other people have asked me this before, the middle mile, you show poles. What's the status when you go to bury this? Do you bury the middle mile and?
So if we do have underground facilities already in place, the middle mile fiber cable will take the same route as the underground primary.
But it it can't go right with it, right? I mean.
No, it probably it would be the same. The same right of way. I can certainly follow up with some more technical specifications after the call if you need.
Thank you.
Sure.
I think since since fiber is is light, the usual, you know, when I buried ethernet out to my office here from the house, I had to keep it, I forget, X inches away from the power. Because the the back hall of of power, the 220, will distort the data signal, which is electrical impulses over ethernet. But with, I mean, just just back of the envelope here, it seems like with fiber optic, there shouldn't be any impact there. So maybe maybe not nearly as much distance as required.
Yeah, and that's a good point, Waldo. And I I don't know the exact clearances between a primary and the actual fiber optic cable from an underground perspective. We are able to install our fiber six inches below the neutral in the supplies. In the in the supply space. And that's just because the the fiber uses a non conductive member. It's ADSS fiber. So we are. You know, if if it did have a conductive member in the middle of it, it would mess with the the signal. But since it does not, we're able to install it pretty close. I'm just not exactly sure what the clearances are from an underground perspective.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
Well, thanks again for that presentation. And Mike, I think we have one more item still on the agenda. Yes?
Yes, sir. Thanks again, Garrett. Really appreciate it. We'll be in touch. All right. So the next, and this is a this is going to be very quick. You know, every quarter, every calendar year quarter, we provide a report to the Board of Supervisors that was sent around. By email for first draft. So, you know, our goal is to have that ready. By the last week of June. So the the Monday that's coming up, not this coming Monday, but the Monday after that. So. You know, we've got time. So if you're asking the board to to look through that report and if there's any changes or considerations, please let us know. Otherwise, we'll just move forward and produce it and put it in. No vote necessary. And that was it for me, unless there's questions about the report now. But we're always available to take those via email.
Chair. Questions for Mike?
Nope.
Cool. I'm being at the end of the agenda. Is there anything else we need to consider before we adjourn? Not seeing any hands or hearing anybody. All right, then. Yes, Trevor, thank you, Trevor. You saved.
I was having trouble getting to my unmute button there. Just an update, really probably under old business, but we are still tracking to the. September return to in person meetings, which will be virtual access, but we're still we're still tracking to that that schedule.
Very good. Thanks for that update. Important note. Yes, Richie?
Just by why follow up on on Trevor's comments. The goal is to have a new remote particip electronic participation policy and virtual meeting policy. For our annual meeting in August. So that'll be drafted. That'll be circulated annually. We readopt our rules, so it'll become part and parcel of our rules. So that's the that that's the target right now.
Thanks, Richie. Very timely. With all that said, is there anything else? Then is there a motion to adjourn?
The move.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Then we stand adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.